Okay, welcome everyone. Thank you for waiting. We're reconvening to regular session. Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson, here. Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Present.
Item 4.2, report on closed session from August 24th, 2022. No action was taken. We heard information from our consultants regarding 750 Rafford property. Again, welcome to another Redwood City School District meeting. If you need translations, si necesita traducción al español, por favor. Oh my God, I got lost this. Comuníquese al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de números. Gracias. Any changes to the agenda?
I was gonna ask, and I don't know if everybody's here, so I'll look to Dr. Baker to say that, yes, we should do this. But if we could move the staff recognitions, we have three staff recognition items that were way at the end of the agenda. And if we could move them before section nine, probably, so that would be 14.3, 14.4, or 14.5.
We do have members in the audience, so.
And then, I don't know if we can move 12.4 and 12.5 to consent. Anybody had questions on those or anything? I've seen nodding, so, okay, so I'd like to move those to consent.
Over those again, Janet.
12.4 and 12.5.
12.4 and 12.5.
What? The resolutions have to stay.
Right, resolutions to stay. But you're saying 12.
12.4 and 12.5 to consent.
Okay.
And then, so 14.3, 14.4, and 14.5 are going where?
They are going to go right after oral communication.
Okay. Do we have everybody here that was coming for it? Do you know?
I believe so.
We do, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and with that.
Could I make, could I make a recommendation that we do the bond items first that way? Because I think those will go pretty quickly, right? I think we have bond consent. That way, if folks want to, I don't know, hop off.
So to confirm, it would be 14.3 through 14.5 under, right before bond program action items.
Right after.
Right after.
Those should all go pretty quickly. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So after 10.3, if that works for others.
I think that's fine.
And with that, can I get a motion to approve the changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
Do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. So nine bond program consent items. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
Alyssa.
So bond program action items. 10.1, recommendation, adoption of fertility. Resolution six, approval of the new building modernization and sidewalk plumbing project. Change order number two with Donelli Plumbing at Taft Community School.
There any questions? We have both Dawn and Will here tonight.
If there are no questions, can I get a motion to approve 10.1?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus. President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
10.2, recommendation, adoption of fertility. Resolution seven, approval of New Scapes Incorporated at Garfield Community School. Are there any questions? Having here none, can I please get a motion to approve 10.2?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
Item 10.3, recommendation, adoption of fertility. Resolution eight, approval of new marquee fire protection at Garfield Community School. Any questions? Hearing none, can I please get a motion to approve 10.3?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
And then is this where the items 14.3 to 14.5?
This is where we'll go.
Okay. So 14.3. Recognize staff who have reached the longevity milestone with the district.
Hey, thank you. Well, tonight is such a special night. We have a crowd here in our boardroom full of employees that will be recognized for various items tonight, but it is my pleasure to recognize in this particular item our amazing staff, our classified, our certificated, and our management staff that have worked with our district for many, many, many years, some just starting out, some, you know, for such a long time. And it, it, it's so amazing every year to look at the years of service, the combined years of service that we have in our district and knowing that people really meet, choose, and love our CSD on many levels. At the August staff meetings that just transpired, employees on the list that you see here as an attachment were recognized at their school site in front of their coworkers in such a special occasion in recognizing the years of service. And so there's in my mind, a handful of employees on this list because we actually have well over 800 employees, but we recognize it five-year increments. So in this case, those on this list met 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and onward. So I wanted to put this item on the agenda tonight to just recognize in a special moment those individuals that have served our district for many years and continue to do so. And we appreciate all of their efforts. They received a certificate and a PIN. We have different PINs with different denotations on it for different years of service. So just wanted to take a moment to recognize them in front of the board. Any questions or comments about this?
I have some comments. That's okay, Cecilia?
Of course.
So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. Many of you I've known for a very long time. I see some of our coaches on here. And the impact each and every one of you has made on our students and our community is just enormous. So I just want to say thank you for all the effort you put in for showing up and for choosing to stay with Redwood City. You guys have made a tremendous difference in our community and in the lives of our students. Thank you and congratulations.
Yeah, and I'll echo that. Thank you to each, everyone on this list, and of course, all of, all of our staff. But particularly the ones that we're recognizing tonight, the really, really the length of service and the dedication, the continued dedication to, you know, really improving students' lives. I love seeing that, you know, all our school sites were represented on these lists and the district office. I love looking at the, you know, the breadth of job, jobs from, you know, teachers, paraeducators, custodians, bus drivers, librarians, to name a few. I mean, there's a lot of the staff represented in this, you know, in this group here. And it's, it's just amazing to see the dedication and the hard work and the milestones that people are achieving. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo my colleagues' sentiments as well. I love looking through this every year when we do this. And it's such a nice way to recognize, you know, a portion of our staff. As you said, we've got 800 staff members. And everybody's making a big difference. And these folks, I mean, seeing these ones like 30 years, 25 years, 20 years, it's amazing. It would be really interesting at some point, Wendy, I don't know if you've ever done it, where you've just added up all the years of service for all 800 employees. I guess you could do that with a spreadsheet somewhat easily. And, you know, it'd be interesting just to look at the number of years of tremendous service to our students and our families. So it's great.
And again, I'm going to echo what everyone has said. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. I do want to say your continued support to the district, your commitment and dedication, it truly is appreciated. Thank you. So moving on to 14.4, recognition of certificated employees.
So thank you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of reinstating our formal employee recognition program that we had, quite frankly, before COVID. COVID changed things a little bit in that regard, so we're coming back to it. Not that we didn't recognize employees, of course, day to day and formally and so forth, but this is a really nice special process with the board to formally recognize individuals for their specific service and specific tasks that are completed every single day to make our organization run really well, smooth operations, and of course, keeping us all safe and happy to come to work every day and for kids to come to learn every day. So I would like it if Dr. Baker and Trustee Marcus could come to the podium while we recognize our first person. And we will be recognizing a certificated employee tonight first, and then for our classified staff, I see many people in the audience, which is great, and on Zoom. So the board and the district would like to acknowledge Dr. Shanna Laney for her dedication in supporting the RCSD community during COVID-19 from January 21 through June 2022. Dr. Laney is a seasoned certificated administrator who stepped into the position of COVID-19 Response Director in January 2021. The Samhain County and Cal OSHA provided a framework for necessary steps for testing, tracking, and tracing employees and then students. This required a need to have an individual be responsible for the latest research, the contracts, the arrangements for outside testing agencies to provide COVID testing services, and the need for superior communication to ensure safety and to address staff morale. Dr. Laney built relationships with our county office to support this work, attended trainings, and arranged for testing services, and built a system of databases and documents to track and trace individuals so that proper notifications and communication would be in place. She often worked on weekends into the evening with the Director of Communication, Jorge Quintana. She also worked closely with school administrators, the Director of Communications, HR Department, and Student Services. The Redwood City School District would like to show our appreciation for Dr. Laney's dedication with a certificate and this board acknowledgement. We would also like to acknowledge the Kwan Foundation for the financial support to ensure we had dedicated personnel to assist with managing this aspect of the COVID pandemic. In the education industry, where our focus is the education of children, Dr. Laney put safety first so that the rest of the RCSD employees and staff could feel rest assured that communication would be timely and informative, and our staff could focus on the hard work of educating students returning from a pandemic. Thank you so much, Dr. Laney, for your support.
Just a bit of a comment, you know, Shanna did a lot when it came to this COVID piece and making sure that we had all our ducks in a row, making sure that with the testing, and then also the notification. And during the time of COVID, there was a time when I was on the East Coast for the holidays. And there was a lot of hype about making sure that the kids were tested prior to coming back to school. So here I am emailing Shanna from, from the East Coast and saying, what do you think? Should we do this? And if we do it, you know, we can do it on Sunday. I'm coming back on Friday. We'll get it done on Sunday. If you'll meet me at the district office. She had it already. And so we had a line, I don't know if you remember, out this door around the block. And then we had, because the tests at that time were really hard to get, we had people from other school districts trying to come and get the tests. To the point where there's one gentleman, I said, if you don't leave, I'm going to have to call the police. It's for the Redwood City School District. And he was from another district, and he says, they're not anywhere. You can't get a test. And I go, I understand. But it's for the Redwood City School District. And Shanna just stepped right in. She met me here that Sunday, I think it was like 11:30, and we had the doors open at 12:00, and we stayed until about 4:00 until we gave every parent that came a test, a couple of tests to take home with, depending on the number of kids they had. Thank you so much. You know, that's above and beyond the duty of what you were asked to do. The wonderful emails, even though they were late at night, 11:00, midnight, the letters are going out. You've got, we've got this positive case here, this positive case. The letters are gone. They're gone. So peace of mind for myself, but thank you so much. Thank you so much and for your all, all your hard work. And for those of you that do not know, she is the vice principal now at Roosevelt. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Give a moment for a picture.
We do, but I think Cecilia would like to say something, so.
I wasn't thinking of speaking, but I do want to say that I do attest to what Shanna did. There was a time when my son was actually a close contact with someone at school, and I got a phone call from Redwood City School District, like at 8:15. And I'm like, I don't know, maybe it's, you know, and I answered it, and it was her. And she's like, I just wanted to let you know. So I'm like, you work this way? So I do appreciate it, you know, as a parent, knowing that our kids are safe, that you were, like Dr. Baker said, taking care of everyone at all this, you know, on the weekends, at times of the day. So I do really appreciate it. Thank you.
We have a moment. Aaron is able to take a picture with Shanna. Do you mind? Sure. Janet, if you'd like to come on up.
Address the board, Mike. Well, that's right, the other person. To normally do this.
So moving right along to item 14.5, recognition of classified employees.
Hey, thank you. Well, we have a special presentation tonight for our recognition of classified employees, our backbone of our district, the support staff that comes to work every single day with an amazing attitude and really the best interests of kids and their learning at heart. It's such a pleasure to speak about our classified staff tonight. We also have our management staff of facilities and transportation here with us who will be giving out specific certificates to individuals here this evening. And then Dr. Baker and the board also have certificates for our managers. So we are excited for this evening. So when the COVID-19 pandemic first surfaced and affected the departure of most staff and students in March 2020, the facilities and transportation staff continued with ensuring sites were cleaned and maintained during this time of uncertainty. As the months progressed, COVID policies from the county were disseminated in June, and the maintenance and transportation departments began to order, store, and deliver personal protective equipment, PPE, and installed Plexiglas, hung signage, purchased air filter systems and MRF-13 filters, arranged furniture to meet the guidance of Cal OSHA and the California Department of Health. The grass was cut, buildings were painted and maintained, and the bus drivers helped with other tasks such as delivering food and essential items to students such as technology devices. Our facility maintenance could have had more time and attention to the physical improvements needed that are often scheduled for summer or winter break vacations. The managers of facilities and maintenance, including James Ross, who isn't here tonight, who's on a well-needed vacation, I have to say, thank you. Thomas DeRosa and Vidal Duran, and led by Martin Cervantes, worked together to communicate with each other and all essential employees so that employees and students who returned on staggered schedules could feel safe. The ongoing efforts of this large team of employees are appreciated all across the district, and they continue to do so. The district and board would also like to acknowledge the maintenance team and transportation team's effort over this past summer in ensuring that all school sites would be ready to welcome back students and 10- and 11-month employees to clean and sparkling buildings while providing a robust summer school program at many sites. The organization of these efforts is appreciated every year. Last week, custodians were putting finishing touches on cleaning windows and building pathways, as noted in the photos here tonight. Among other workers here, you can see all of the various activities that the staff was working on, just a few of them, I might add. The Redwood City School District would like to show our appreciation for the Maintenance and Operations Department's dedication to all employees and students with a certificate for each employee in these departments and this board acknowledgement. We appreciate how our classified staff works hard to support the physical environments of our campus so our employees and students feel safe and nurtured coming to work and learning every day. Thank you so much.
So this evening, what we're going to do is give the managers the certificates. Certificate for each manager, and then you, the managers are going to give the individual certificates to your department people when they, when you get there tomorrow. But I'm going to bring the department people up with the managers at the same time, if you don't mind. Okay? So come on up. The managers and those others that are not management, but definitely do help make Redwood City School District a success. I'll give you both. Oh, you're very good, Martin. So Martin, thank you so much. Martin is works very diligently every day of the week and on the weekends. And regarding our facilities, how you work with it, I don't know. But, you know, we really definitely appreciate everything you have done. And no matter when we call you, you're there. So thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thomas DeRosa is another manager that works very closely with the facility department and also helps everything go like clock. Day in, day out, weekends, holidays, if needed, for sometimes we have these emergencies. I thank you so much. Vidal? You're new to the district, but we couldn't survive without you. Vidal works in the transportation department. He's the one that makes sure buses are running. And, you know, this past week, I was skeptical. No, not in the view, not in the view of all these kids that we have that were coming in miserable, that needed transportation. It's not businessable. I mean, there's different ones coming into the district. We want to make sure we have transportation. And our newcomer program is fantastic. And they call you, you get them on. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. There were times in this district when we had many buses and there'll be a few kids on it. And superintendent said at that time, I got a little wasted money, and probably it was, but now the children that, the transportation, and with your leadership. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Not only for our gentleman, I agree with the price, definitely. Let me, you know, voice that. Thank you so much. Thank you. And Martin, you had some for your.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. You're welcome. You fly to. Hi, Maria. Local scholar, she's our dispatcher. Working long hours to get the schedules ready during COVID as well. Very hard to do that six-foot distance instead of us, but we figured it out. I got Ben from South. Thank you for our nutrition. Thank you, Ben. And we have James Pruitt. James Pruitt is one of our like. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think they're good. Marty is going to say words, and then we're going to get a picture.
So again, like I mentioned before, to the people with the longevity and the district, for you guys, for coming into work every day and giving it your best, it is very appreciated from, I'm saying this personally, but I'm sure it's the same sentiment for all the other board members. So we really appreciate your commitment to Redwood City. Thank you.
All right.
So you do mind if I say something real quick?
Hold on one second. Hold on one second, Elise, okay?
Okay, you bet.
All right, so. And before you go, we have a board member in the morning to say something. So, Alyssa, why don't you?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Alyssa, why don't you go ahead?
Thanks. I'm sure Maria and Mike, well, all three of us, we so wish we could be there tonight. We always would, of course, rather be in person, but tonight is especially special with the longevity awards, but also the, the awards we just gave for facilities. And it's just wonderful seeing those of you who are there tonight. I know many of you for years, and you're just incredible individuals. And I just wanted to say thank you so much. Your dedication to our students, our families, our staff is just remarkable. We're so fortunate to have you. And so thank you from the bottom of my heart. I really appreciate all that you do.
Okay, I'm moving on to item 11, consent items. Can I get a motion? Oh, actually.
Actually, there's something.
Yes.
Before you go on to the consent items, the only thing that I wanted to mention is there was item, I believe it is, I know it's highlighted, and Evelyn did it. It's 11.11.
It's eleven point eleven. And you all, by all, I mean, the board members received that exhibit A, which did delineate the services that were going to be provided. Now, it's not part of the agenda that was uploaded for tonight's presentation due to, after seventy-two hours, we cannot upload anything onto the agenda after that. So it's my recommendation, if you feel comfortable to move forward, knowing that you have the information that was requested.
I'm fine. Is everybody okay?
I see the shaking of heads. Alright, so go ahead and go with the consent.
Okay, so with that, can I please get a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
President Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Action items twelve point one. Recommendation Adoption of Resolution Nine Conflict of Interest Code and Second Reading and Approval of Board Policy. Ninety-two seventy conflict, conflict of interest.
Yes, and we heard the first reading at our last board meeting and this, as you recall, is that Form seven hundred. And there were some changes made to the people that need to complete that form. And what the administration is asking for this evening is to move forward with the recommendation.
If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve twelve point one?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
President Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Item twelve point two. Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Resolution Ten Approval of Teachers Gaining Tenure Status.
Once again, in night of celebration, we have various individuals on the list before you who have achieved tenure in our district, assuming the approval this evening. And that requires at least two years of satisfactory evaluations in our district and a recommendation for tenure status tonight. It's a great celebration for these individuals as well. They'll be receiving certificates upon approval this evening. From their side administrator.
I'd just like to say congratulations to those teachers and I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
I'll say congratulations as well in a second.
And congratulations again. And can I please get roll call?
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi, and congratulations.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
President Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Item Board and Superintendent Reports thirteen point one. Report from Board Members and Superintendent. I apologize. So twelve point three. Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Resolution Eleven Approval of Education Code Options for Teaching Assignments.
Are there any questions regarding this ed code waiver request?
If there are no questions, can I get a motion to approve twelve point three?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please. Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
President Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Okay, Board and Superintendent's report. Item thirteen point one. Report from Board Members and Superintendent.
None for me.
I just have, we had a workforce housing committee meeting to prepare for our closed session earlier this evening.
If I had that same meeting and I also had a Redwood City together, we had a closed session, the leadership team. And Dr. Baker and I read that.
And then there's no report for me.
Yeah, and I don't have anything to report. I joined the Mezares campaign meeting on Friday, but that wasn't.
So if I could just re- report out on, it was a great start to school. We started, this is day six, so it's been fantastic. The only thing that came up, which all board members do know about, was the incident that took place at Hoover Park. What I'd like to say is I really want to congratulate our site administration. Our extended school day providers. PEL, the PEL Police Athletic League, BGCP, Boys and Girls Club at the Peninsula. On their efforts to make sure that everyone was safe during that time. On Friday, I happened to be in a meeting with, where Elise was there and Mike was there. And got the call from Martin, who was here this night, that there was a lock, there's a lockdown at Hoover. And this is about, I guess maybe about four o'clock, well after four, maybe right before it. And he said, the police were coming and for me to make sure not to go near the school right now, but as soon as we, we were able to, he would give me the all clear and we could get, get there. So what's very important is that each school has a safety plan. And Ms. Guzman had already started some of the practices with her staff. And even though this was the after-school program that was doing the providing of services at this time. There are about three hundred kids that were involved. Plus, we had our preschool, we have our preschool that's on that site that had the afternoon group there. So it was really important that they also knew about the procedures and safety when something like this takes place. So about an hour and a half later, the police did say that they wanted to evacuate the building. And so they wanted, they were taking the students in groups, the police were there. Martin was there, some of his team was there, the administration was there. And they wanted us to make sure that their parents were notified that they could pick them up at Costco, but where the tire repair shop is, at that tire shop on that side. What was really evident also is that when we pushed out the information vis a vis the black four, back blackboard. Parents were notified that even though they heard what they probably heard on the news and maybe their kids were texting them. Everyone was safe and everyone was in the classroom. And then when we gave the all clear of where they were to come pick up their children, they did it without being anxious. They did it in a calm manner. I'm talking to parents because I thought when I got there, parents were going to be crazy, you know, just filled with so much anxiety and, you know, their child and they were calm, but they were very thankful that they were protected and that we had them in a safe place. So I really give kudos to the administration at Hoover, kudos to the Redwood City Police Department and to our extended day providers, the PEL program and also BGCP. And also to Antonio Perez, who is the Director of Student Services, who ran out right at that time and waited at Costco while I was got out of my meeting and then I went, went over. But the last child was picked up about seven. We stayed there, all of us did. Costco was great. They, they brought out water for the kids and treats. Yeah, so it, it was, it was good and you could see getting into Costco into the parking lot was a nightmare. So you had to go away. I went the way of Burger King and back through what used to be the old Lowe's and parked there because there's no way I was going to get parking in the Costco parking lot. But everyone did a fantastic job. So we are going to talk about that tomorrow at tomorrow's principal's meeting, just to make sure that there's practice and those safety plans. They are all up to date, but you really need to follow them. Every teacher needs to be aware of it. But just wanted to make you aware of that.
Cecilia, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Dr. Baker thanked everyone, but I would like to thank Dr. Baker because he was out there. And he went home late and he stayed until our students were all picked up. I also am very thankful that he has listened to us and has been inclusive. And make sure that the children in the preschool were also included in the safety protocols and are part of the school instead of a separate department. I think that through his leadership and him being calm and on-site. I think that that reassures the parents as well. So thank you, Dr. Baker, for making sure that everyone was safe. And for staying so late.
Sure.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Dr. Baker. I know that as board members, we got an email and then he also follow up on a message. So it is very much appreciated. Thank you. So moving along to information, item four point one. I mean fourteen point one, information on the Samatow County Investment Fund for July twenty twenty two.
Does anyone have any questions?
No question.
I guess we're fine.
Okay, so item fourteen point two, forty-five day revision.
Good evening, members of the board and community. Superintendent Baker, tonight presented a brief update on the outcome of the signed or enacted California state budget that occurred in late June. Going through the slide, we'll talk about some of the increases in funding, decreases in funding and additions to our revenues for Redwood City Schools. So going through here, the one thing that everyone was anticipating but not sure, everyone no one knew exactly what would happen would be what the statutory COLA and the ultimately the augmentation would be to the LCFF base grants. And as you can see, highlighted in red, it was a total of twelve point eight four. Which included six point five, six percent of statutory COLA that was anticipated at budget adoption. But then there was the augmentation of six point two eight percent, which expanded or was put towards the LCFF base that was not included in the adopted budget for Redwood City. With these increases to the LCFF funds, you can see in the bottom portion of the slide. The increase to supplemental and concentration. We're estimating right now at about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars addition to those grants. It's important to note that this was not increased funding to Redwood City School District. It will simply be a transfer between unrestricted general fund and put into the supplemental and concentration grants. Looking at the components of LCFF funding in the table, you can see that our LCFF entitlement is approximately seventy-nine point three million dollars. Which is an increase approximately six million dollars over the adopted budget with the augmentation added. More important on here is to show the add-ons and talk about those for just a second. The home-to-school transportation set at the two thousand twelve thirteen level of a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Starting in twenty-three, twenty-four, that number will get a COLA increase annually. And then you can see also the add-on for transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, excuse me, approximately three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Also noteworthy, this is not additional revenue to Redwood City School District. Rather is a transfer from unrestricted general fund into these add-on areas. So total entitlement after the enacted state budget is approximately seventy-nine point three million towards LCFF funding sources. Going through the next couple of slides, we'll talk about the additional funding that Redwood City is expected to receive, the first one being the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. And is, as you can see on the first sub-bullet, there really is a broad, there's an opportunity for a broad use of these funds. And they are available to be used through the twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year. One thing that we have not received yet is our final apportionment letter. Or any of the potential reporting requirements that will be part of that, that we know that will be there. Right now, we are estimating our allocation at eight point four million dollars with this new funding. Another one-time funding is the art, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant. This one too has some broad language. I know that Ms. Wolf and her team are already looking at ways and exploring ideas of how they can utilize this money in our schools. Especially to provide electives and other services for students in this area. This money will be available for use through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Once again, we have not received our final apportionment letter, so we're estimating this to be at three point nine million. And we also don't know the exact reporting requirements, but we do know that a plan will have to come back to the board for approval of these expenditures. This one is certainly new is the home-to-transfer, home-to-school transportation funding. And what this is, is sixty percent of prior year expenses coming into the following year budget. As of right now, this money will not have COLA attached to it. That will be on the add-on in the LCFF only. We've estimated revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three based on last year's expenditures. And then increase that annually as an estimate using CPI for the consumer price index. On what we expect to get over the course of the next three years. This one, as every new funding source from the state does have a plan requirement that will be brought by April first, twenty twenty-three and then updated annually by April first in the following years. On this one, the Extended Learning Opportunities Program. I know that Redwood City has been talking about this for a while through COVID with some of the funding and the continuation on this program. Through the negotiations with passing the state enacted budget. We have recalculated our expected revenue from this, decreasing it from six point four million to five point five million. Once again, we're waiting for our apportionment letters for this money as well. One other note on there. This is important as we expand services. Twenty-two, twenty-three school year remains a grace period, not subject to audit findings. But in twenty-three, twenty-four, that changes where non-compliance will result in withholding funds. So this will be something that we are monitoring and coming back with a plan to make sure that we're following this. To the letter of the law, so to speak, so that we don't become in a situation where we would have to give up funds. This one, the one-time discretionary block grant was anticipated after the May revision. And talked about through the budgeting process. With an allocation of approximately fifteen hundred dollars per ADA that can be used on anything related to school operations or learning environments. We anticipated approximately eight point eight million dollars. That was removed from the enacted budget. And essentially replaced with some of the other funding, which is much larger in totality than the eight point eight. But we have additional requirements with those other funds. Where this would have been essentially free and clear money for us to use as needed for operations of the school district. So unfortunate to see that go in as a whole. unfortunate to see that go in as a whole, but still happy that we got other revenues that we can use to support our students. So summary, this slide simply states in brief what happened with each type of funding. The LCFF concentration grant with no net impact, the block grants with their estimated allocations and then the elimination of the one-time discretionary grant. The full impact of this will be brought back during the presentation of the first interim and that report where we'll explain how this is impacting our budget for the current year and then our two out years as well with that. I'll turn it back over to the board and if there are any questions.
Are there any questions for the board members?
I guess the one, the one question, and thanks Rick for answering my questions and email. Is there, I mean, is the anticipation that at the interim we'll see cuts in some of the places that we were trying to budget? The only one that sort of struck, stuck out to me was the ELOP. Seemed like that was reduced and that one sort of is already funded by that special amount there. Or in general, are you thinking that it's going to be, you know, shifting of funding, but for the most part, like what, what, what should we be prepared for in the interim? If it's too early to say, that's totally fine, but are we looking at cutting services, keeping them same? Like what's your general feeling?
I would say right now there might be a shift in some of this funding with some of the broadness of definition as we know it today. I wouldn't expect, you know, cuts at first interim based off of this update. It's certainly something we'll be looking at through the budgeting process in totality with the health of of the district's budget and still providing needed services. And as we get through this fall, working with not only business staff, but throughout the organization and trying to see how this money can help offset and then looking at what is still needed to, to support our, the organization. So it'll be a work in progress through first interim, but we should have a better idea then of what we need to do in preparation for the creation of the twenty-three twenty-four budget.
Got it. Thanks.
Are there no more questions? Thank you, Rick, for the presentation and the information. Fourteen point six, information regarding the Redwood City School District Plan for COVID Response for the twenty-two twenty-three school year.
Thank you. So tonight, as you heard, we recognized Dr. Laney for her efforts bringing us up to this point. Our COVID nineteen response team is here tonight, except Antonio Perez in terms of the presentation. But there is a new team that is carrying our district through. As you know, we are still in a pandemic, but things have changed drastically in terms of reduction of cases and so forth, which we're pleased to see. And so while it still requires staff attention, we have essentially taken duties as appropriate and dispersed them. And so tonight, I'm pleased that Patrina Red, our Director of Health and Wellness, will be presenting on her portion and what she is overseeing in regards to COVID nineteen. And Erin Keckos, my fantastic Director of HR, who is spearheading employees and will also speak to students on behalf of Antonio Perez, who's in our audience tonight, but is not presenting. So thank you so much for the team for carrying us forward. So I'll turn it over to Patricia to share her screen.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Baker and District Level Cabinet. So tonight I will be presenting my portion of the COVID protocols for the twenty-two twenty-three school year. First, I would like to discuss some of the changes for this school year. San Mateo County Office of Ed has now changed the name from Pandemic Recovery Framework to COVID nineteen Safe School Framework. As far as the district goes, you guys may be already aware of this, but our grant with the BPLA sunsetted this summer. So we are no longer testing onsite and that includes the expiration of our CLIA waiver, which our district staff will also no longer be testing onsite. Also, we have a new system for staff and students to report COVID cases and our daily wellness survey is no longer being used by our district employees. We do have a new team. I also want to acknowledge Shannon, Dr. Shannon Laney, for all the hard work that she has done since I've been in the district and passing the torch on to us. So myself, as well as the district nurses, we are monitoring the tests and the updates on the pandemic framework. HR Erin Keckles, she is monitoring the tracking and tracing of staff and Antonio Perez and Jocelyn is at Minister, they are working on the tracking and tracing and communication to families about student cases. For masking in the district, it is strongly recommended. It is not required. District staff can still order masks using the Google form. Students, we, we ask that they bring masks, but the district also have them available at each of the school offices. The ventilation remains the same as for last year. We had the MERV thirteen air filters and the portable air purifiers and that remains in place. We also still recommend for eating that students social distance as well as staff when indoors and using outdoor spaces such as the outside benches, the grass area when eating. And then the hand washing stations and sanitizer dispensers also will remain on site. As far as employees vaccination and vaccination verification goes, Erin will go into more detail, but vaccination verification of staff is still required. Vaccinated staff will need to test weekly using at-home kits that has been dispersed by HR and that information still remains protected for vaccination status. Students, it is not required that they are vaccinated for COVID. However, our nurses are collecting that information for any students that have received the COVID vaccination. And we are looking into offering another COVID vaccination and flu shot event this fall. So how do you obtain COVID nineteen tests? Well, we have plenty of tests with our latest delivery of COVID tests. We're just short of about thirty thousand tests of the over the counter test to issue out to symptomatic students as well as to staff. And then we are also going to make those tests available like last year during the different breaks. And then any student or staff that is symptomatic or concerned about exposure, we will issue the test out, the over the counter test at the school sites for both students and staff. And then prior to the school year beginning, all of our school sites offered the over the counter test kits to families as well as staff. And we had a little bit over three thousand tests that were picked up by staff and families prior to the school year so that they can test. Within the Redwood City community, there's a lot of different community test sites. We also have Curative as one of the nearest test sites at the North Fair Oaks location. And then we also have locations in Millwall Park and county sponsored locations. And then I'm going to turn it over now to Ms. Keckles to go over employing student COVID supports.
So this section's going to give information regarding the protocols and procedures we have in place to support students and families who are experiencing a COVID nineteen incident, whether that be symptoms or a positive case during the school year. So on this slide, you see two different sides. So on the left-hand side, the procedure for students or families reporting a positive case of a student. On each, on our district webpage and each school's homepage, there is a COVID nineteen self-reporting form linked at the top. And families will use that to submit all of the details regarding their student's positive case. School office staff is also ready to assist if needed, if the family is not able to support the, or to submit the form electronically. Once that form is submitted, the family will get an automatic response, providing them immediate guidance and guidelines regarding return to school, isolation period, and how to obtain a test. Student Services, Antonio Perez and his Admin Assistant Jocelyn are monitoring that response or that self-reporting form. And they are contacting parents individually as needed to provide additional support. We also have a new email account, student covidresponse@rcsdka.net that families can email to get more individualized support from Student Services and more to have direct lines of communication in case they have a question that they need clarified. For employees, we have an employee COVID response email account that employees can email and just let us know that they've tested positive. They'll receive an automatic response with next steps. So it has guidance, it has isolation information. And also next steps included in that is a self-reporting form and ways to report their absence and all the needed documents. That employee COVID response email is monitored by HR and we are responding individually as needed throughout the day. Next slide, please. The guidelines that the families and staff are receiving in the auto response remain very, very similar to last year. They are, if you're positive, the day your symptoms begin or the day you get, you receive a positive test result, whichever comes first is day zero. You'll test again on day five if your symptoms have improved. And if you're negative, you can return on day six. For students and staff, either Student Services or HR are connecting with the families or positive staff in order to ensure that they are able to obtain a COVID test if they need one by day five to return on day six. If you continue to test positive or still have a fever or your symptoms haven't resolved, then you'll need to stay out either until day eleven or symptoms have improved and you've returned a negative test result. All of this information, it's a lot and it comes in the auto response and it's a very clearly organized for families and staff so that they can determine their next steps. But and then in the time, during the time in between their report and us reaching out individually. Next slide, please. For the COVID notifications, we are required to notify staff of a positive case on campus. And we are also notifying the school community. We are continuing to do so. Similar to the procedures that we used last year, HR is sending out the staff notifications and site admin is sending out the community notifications. HR is also notifying close contact employees individually as per OSHA. And we send these notifications out directly to employees when they have been identified as a close contact of a positive case. Next slide, please. Thank you. So with all of this information, it's really important for us to remember and to plan our communication to our various stakeholders. So in order to communicate this information to employees, we had a slide deck and Patricia and Antonio and I did a tour of our employees and offered this presentation to several different groups. Our admin teams also reviewed it at their all-staff meeting when they welcomed their site staffs back on campus. We met with office staff, district office staff and managers and supervisors and made sure that all of this information was disseminated properly and repeated and shared amongst our employees. HR is also going to be including a link of the PDF of the slide deck in our newsletter that goes out monthly. For the new reporting system of employee COVID response, we've sent an email to all employees with updates and that was included. We also have a flyer that's going to be posted at school sites or work sites. It'll also be included in our newsletter and admin teams are including a reminder about this email account in their newsletters to staff. In our community, our plan for communicating to families, the district website is really our information hub and it's linked here. Most of our, all of our information can be found there and our communication staff is working to alert and send out information directly to parents and school communities. They have reminders planned throughout the year. They are prepared to update our communities if guidance changes or we need to alert to a new procedure. Where they're doing this and they're alerting our community through emails, mass text messages via Blackboard, flyers going out via Peachjar and hard copy on sites as well as our social media accounts. And we really want to thank everyone for Communications, Health and Wellness, Student Services and HR for coming together to offer the support to our students and our families and our staff. As we come back for this school year, we really think that we have a well-thought-out plan, ready to support and keep everyone happy and healthy and on sites. At this time, we are ready for questions if there are any.
Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for all that you are doing to continue to keep us safe. I know it's a, it's a big responsibility and I think you, you've done a fantastic job for the last two and a half years and continue to do it. And I guess I'll just take this opportunity to say too, that if anybody wants more tests, the federal government is doing a third round of free tests. So for all households, so you can just go on the USPS website and order more. I got four boxes this time last time it was two. So that's another opportunity for tests if people need them.
I, I also would like to just say thank you very much. Erin, I know you've been working on this for quite a while now and Patricia, it's nice to have you on board and Antonio and just everybody. Really appreciate all you've done. And you know, I was reflecting, I'm sure all of us were sort of looking at the agenda this, this week and saying, you know, this, this is at the lower part of the agenda when for years it was the upper part of the, that monopolizing most of our conversations at our school board meetings, hundreds of people making comments. You know, really, you know, it was a thing that our whole community went through together to really try to keep everybody safe. And I'm so proud of the work that we did in Redwood City that we did keep our staff safe, our students safe, right? And we continue to do the work that needed to be done, educating students. So it's just a great reminder sort of where we've been and where we are now. And although COVID is still in the community, you know, because of vaccinations and all the hard work we're doing, we're keeping everybody safe and continuing to educate. So anyway, just, just thank you very much. And I think we all, you know, can have kind of a sigh of relief knowing sort of where we've been and where we're going. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll jump in real fast and answer that. Thanks as well, but also just how it's adapting, right? This plan is always adapting and what, what we see here is, you know, Erin, you called it a well-thought-out plan. It is indeed, but it's also an appropriate one for where we are in, you know, this what feels like a forever journey through the COVID panic, the pandemic. So you know, it looks great. Thanks for putting it together.
And I would also like to add my thanks. We had the facilities team earlier on, and I think this is again a group effort and I just want to say thank you to all of you for continuing to keep up with all the new items that need to be taken care of and keeping our community safe. And also for helping our families navigate through it. You know, change is hard for everybody and this has been, as Mike said, a journey and Jen had said for the last, it seems like forever now. So thank you guys for all you do.
And again, I don't want to be redundant. Of course, thank you, thank you, everyone. I think for the many hats everyone here in Redwood City wears, because you guys wear them very well. So your job is very appreciated. And then I just had a comment, did I understand correctly, Erin? There is a newsletter or there will be a newsletter for staff? So this is separate from the superintendents to the entire community.
So Human Resources sends out our newsletter, HR Happenings, to our employees. So it's a communication from Human Resources directly to our employees. It goes out once a month and that's where we will have this information kind of living so that it can be referred to.
Great. I'm happy to hear that. Again, thanks, everyone. Okay, so fifteen, item fifteen point one, correspondence. Okay, so fifteen, item fifteen point one correspondence. None. Item sixteen, other business suggested items for future agendas. None. Seventeen point one, changes to the board agenda schedule of items. Do we have any changes? Thank you. Well, um, it is eight sixteen now. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moving. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
I just.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, I was hoping we could close the meeting in honor of Don Diaz tonight. I know he was on earlier and my understanding is he's officially retiring August thirtieth. So I think this was his last board meeting unless of course he comes back in and helps out in other ways. And I know we're going to have a retirement party for him because I specifically asked about that because I wanted to make sure if this was our last opportunity to thank him. We did so, but I just thought it might be nice to close the meeting in honor of Don Diaz and just the incredible work he's done for our district over the ten years of his time with us. If, if that's okay with you, Maria, and you can go ahead and make the motion.
Oh, I was, I was just going to say the same thing. How much you're going to lose the. Yeah, the wealth of, of knowledge that leaves with him is just enormous. So he has really made an impact on our district on many levels. So I think it's totally appropriate and I would second that.
Thanks. Okay, so everyone have a good evening.
Bye. Thank you. Thanks, Cecilia.